Said it flat out, last meeting with the streetlights, that he was overwhelmed because he did not have an assistant. On the streetlight issue, that we blew that contractor if something happened, he was trying to run nine different hats. So, my suggestion is that if we want, I'm willing to compromise with this position, but not to give a whole public works, because John never, our other one, never had an assistant. City ran fine. I'm just not ready to give a full-blown position of a public work assistant at this time. I'd rather do split it.
We have got Alderman, the other Alderman, Wesley first, and then I'll get down to Alderman Winger and Alderman Woods.
I have a, the complaint that we had with Mr. Kramer before, that he couldn't, he didn't have enough help to get the projects done, and he couldn't take time off. So, we gave him, last year, we gave you authorization for $50,000 to fill in that position, to the manager. You failed to do that, I don't know why, to fill that position, for that, with that $50,000.
You want to answer that one quickly?
Sure. I was told after the council passed the budget, that not to fill that position by that employee that you're referencing, that he no longer needed it.
Okay.
If anything, if anything, I would say, put, put the $50,000 back in there. I'll go along with Alderman Eugene Wesley, to have an assistant with you. And Mark Thede, Brad Kitterson does an excellent job over by the sewer treatment plant. I mean, that's the problem with government, we have too much people, too many supervisors. And this is, as far as I'm concerned, at this pay, this is a supervisor's position, and I'm not going to be in favor of it.
Alderman.
On this one, I am, but there's others.
Alderman Winger, you want to?
Mr. Mayor, did you wish to go before? Okay. So, a comment and a question. So, last year, with the previous director, we did approve a position, and that director chose not to fill it. So, to keep that and bring it forward in the budget, I don't believe that that's wrong. I think we should, we recognize the need for someone in there, a skilled, qualified person. And it's not, an executive assistant, the director already has an executive assistant and someone who does the dial ride. So, he doesn't need someone to answer his phones, he needs someone to do hands-on project management. And, and then, secondly, I don't know if it's, which of you would be best to articulate the neutral cost that this would be, by taking the 111,000 from one area and then covering it with a battery. So, I think that that would be important to kind of walk through that at this point, and then recognize other people.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to say something, then?
Staff just put up a slide, I was just curious.
And I get what I asked for, I guess.
Okay, Alderman Woods had a question, or a comment.
Oh, you're?
Alderman Woods.
I thought they were going to answer that question first.
Yeah, what about my, can they answer that part first?
Do you mind, Alderman Woods, if they?
No, not at all. I was waiting for the answer.
Why don't you tell us about that slide?
I do appreciate all the comments. In this case, we do have budgeted $282,000 to support the city of Wooddale through our engineering firms. What I would be proposing to do is to reduce that $282,000 by the corresponding amount that we hire an individual for. Now, what we've tried to do is give you the worst-case scenario of somebody that would have the skills that I guess it is that I'm seeking. So, that number that you see there is a fully burdened cost, and, you know, would have somebody with seven to 10 years of experience. One option, you know, that I think we could also consider is find somebody maybe with lesser experience that would have a lesser cost, and, but, the idea here is to reduce that 280,000 by whatever proportion it costs, it actually costs the city to employ that individual.
Okay.
Alderman Woods, still want to say something?
Yeah, just to follow up, I'm in agreement, I think that, I'm looking at the job description and all the things that happened, that person could be an assistant city manager, or he could be assistant public works director. Most of them are, the key, I mean, we need to manage the projects, but we needed to manage the contracts. If you look at all the things in the job description, long-range capital planning, well, assistant city manager, construction administration, assistant city manager, infrastructure data, assisting, development of departments, annual capital improvement budget, assistant, so I could make the argument that that's a person that we need. And I believe that we need that person there. Some of these functions, I'm not trying to take a guy away from somebody else, these tasks will still be getting done, they'll just be getting done from a different department. It really doesn't matter if we manage that construction contract from city hall's administrative offices or the public works department. But given all the criteria that they put in the job description, I truly believe that that person should be an assistant city manager, and that's, that's the position that I would support at this time. And it'll, and it actually takes care of both issues. I mean, it takes care of the issue of giving the public works director help, so we're not, not taking the work away from him, we're just changing the title of that person. So, everything else functionally is going to happen the way that everybody's planning it, other than what we call that guy.
Okay, let me back up a little bit with the history of this. When I first started, I was looking for the city to have an engineer, full-time, and have him do most of the work, and only specialized items go out to contract engineers. We hired an engineer, he was a dumb cough, pardon my language, he didn't know what he was doing, he would just sat at a desk in his own little office and didn't do anything. So, we, he left, and we hired an on-hand public works director, who was out there with his people in the field. If there was a water break, he was there, drove all the way from his house immediately and went and spent the night there if he had to. So, he's, but he's gone now. So, now, it looks to me, I'm not sure if this is what we're, what staff is looking for, it looks to me like we're, we want to have an engineer, so that they will be doing, I don't know what percent, but a good portion of the engineering work that's done for streets and pipes and waters, everything else, and then you're looking for somebody to run public works, that would be working for the engineer. Am I coming across, is that what you want? I'd rather have the manager ask, answer that one.
No, the, this person would not be engineering streets or doing a lot of the components that former city engineer was doing. This person would be doing a lot of the components we now currently pay outsourced engineering firms to do, as far as contract management. So, if you have, let's say, the 2012 street program, well, the whole 2012 street program has been administered in the past by a consulting firm, an engineering firm. There's contract management, there's field services, things like that. That's what we're trying to bring some of that in-house for accountability. We think that perhaps with bringing in-house, we're not reliant all the time on the engineering firm to manage the contracts for us. If there's a problem with the contract, it's our problem, it's not really their problem. If there's terms we want within the contract, you know, we're more involved in the process if we're doing it ourselves, rather than relying on a firm to do it. So, it's a different relationship of what we've had in the past.
Let me, let me mention that I was told by staff that every single major project in the year 2012 was over budget. So, we had Baxter and Woodman, but I don't know if we had anybody looking up for Wooddale. For instance, as was mentioned before, about how many lights do we have in town? I mean, you know, if Baxter and Woodman was the engineer, they should have been able to say, wait a minute, that's the wrong number, if they were doing the job. So, I don't know which, really, personally, I don't know which way to go. I, would it work to have an assistant city manager, half-time, as public works assistant? I really don't know what the manager's feeling about that would be. Please do.
My personal opinion is the council's fooling around with this a little bit too much. It's a public works proposed position, we didn't propose an administrative assistant city manager position. The duties in here relate to public works functionality. Again, that's the project as presented, so it's up to you guys if, if you'd like to proceed with this, that's fine, if not, then we won't.
Well, Rich was saying that a new hire would deduct from our total engineering bill, at least that amount that we're paying him. Is, is that your thinking, too?
That's why we brought this up, to try to cut back on those costs, get more accountability on the, you know, internal staff, and anything else this individual is able to do is a bonus within, you know, other projects.
So, you are talking about Rich being an engineer, and having a public works director reporting to him?
No.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the whole thing yet. Alderman Woods, and then Alderman Lazara?
Yeah, let me clarify my position, I'm not looking to have a city manager slash public works director, assistant city manager, just those duties that are enumerated in this job description could easily be pushed over as administrative functions to the assistant manager. Where they, where these tasks are performed, as far as contractual things, really don't matter after it performed at the city hall or at the public works building. I'm not looking to combine the position, just create the position, and that's more an assistant city manager description than it is an assistant public works director, or whatever we're going to call that guy, project manager description.
Who would he report to? Who was the supervisor?
City manager.
Who was the person immediately?
The city manager.
Not to the engineer?
No.
Okay, who else had, Alderman Lazara?
I mean, at this point, I'm pretty confused as to if I want to go ahead and okay this. We have the salary of 111,000, they were also have a proposal for the 50,000. What, what I guess I'm looking at is, if I was to fill out this resume, to have this job for 111,000, what would I put on it in order to get this job? And then, secondly, if I was going after the 50,000 job, what would I put on my resume to get that? What's the difference between the two?
Well, let's be clear, it's an 80,000 a year job, and it's got benefits that go along with it, okay? So, it's a, someone who's got seven to 10 years of experience managing construction projects, preferably somebody who's an engineer, who can work during the winter time, when designs are being developed and plans and specs are being written, be able to oversee that activity and manage that flow of work as we prepare for summer construction season.
Did I have a degree in engineering?
Yes. Then, and then in the summertime, what you'd be doing is you'd be out in the field managing the projects onsite, bouncing from project to project.
I think you're going a little bit more than what I was asking. I don't mean to interrupt, but what I'm asking is, so I need seven to 10 years of experience, I need to be an engineer, right? And what else would make you want to hire me?
Again, some project management experience, where someone has worked to develop a design, and worked to oversee a design, and then do some onsite oversight of contractors, and manage and close out projects, just like what we contract for Baxter and Woodman to do for us. We would take some of what they do, or some other engineering firm, and have them do less, and have this individual fill those voids.
Okay, now, what about the 50,000?
50,000, I think, is really someone that could have some construction experience, perhaps?
How many years were we talking?
Uh, maybe they got 10 or 15, and they've been a superintendent on a construction site for a utility company. So, they're not a degreed individual, they would just?
Not an engineer?
No.
A degree individual?
We would, we would want to seek somebody that has some academic background, maybe in construction management or business administration, or some form of academic background as well.
Okay, so if we, if we do this, then that wouldn't take away the engineering costs that we, we have, because we don't have an engineer, right? If, if we go with the 50,000, because we're not going to attract an engineer.
If we went with someone with a lesser salary, we would have less opportunity to bring that number down.
Bring that number down, okay. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask, interject one more thing here? I know it's going to complicate things, but under tourism, we're asking for 100,000 for somebody who's going to do project management, plan, schedule, and control activities for the project, an advisor, review existing information, administration and meetings, identify conflicts. I mean, what is that? Is that another person, or what? Mr. Manager?
Yeah, that number was put in there specifically on the high end, because we really did, that number is, is on the high end of an estimate on what we think we may spend with that. That's something different than an employee that would be bringing on some type of specialized firm to help us with the complexities of the tollway coming through our community, similar to what our task is doing, bringing on a team of individuals that can help with the ins and outs of the process.
Don't we have a young lady just hired to do that?
No, 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 no.
I don't know.
We do have a young lady that would be involved in the process, but to task her with the whole endeavor of the tollway coming into the city would be unrealistic. It would be unrealistic to task her with the whole endeavor.
Right. Mr. Mayor, and then Mr. Wesley, down there.
Regarding the position.
What about me?
Oh, I'll continue to.
Regarding the position, if I recall, we just had about, what was it, 300,000, 300,000 worth of extras that were, were added to the contracts that were not approved at the, at the time the contract was awarded. So, we had some overruns, we had 300,000 to 400,000. Basically, we need somebody to handle these contracts, because somehow we had a little disconnect last year. Whether it's an assistant city manager, or project manager, somewhere we need some help to make sure we don't have 300,000 to 400,000 overruns, which should never happen.
As I mentioned before, there was, every single project we had last year was over budget. Alderman Wesley, then Alderman Woods, and then Alderman Coles.
I, obviously, we, we up in arms, we don't know which way to go with this, so I'm going to make a motion on the floor that we revisit this position, or revisit as a city manager, have them work out the numbers for the city manager, so I will make the motion that we deny this request at this time. That is my motion.
I think you can make a bit of motion.
I'd like to say something first.
Alderman Coles has been waiting for a while.
It's fine, you can ask questions.
Before you make your motion. All right, we had a, we had a guy that was in control of city services, came to his vacation time, he couldn't take it off because he was always here. So, he complained about it, and, so, we had a, we had a guy that was supposed to take care of the engineering of city services, and he went. Now, we have, we have a fellow that's probably got a lot of years in, I talked to an inspector that was on a job, I don't want to mention it, his name, he came to my house on a Sunday, and he says, "I can't work here anymore, after 30 years of being on, on projects on streets because of things that are so messed up." Now, because of contracts, and because of things that were being changed, nobody knew what was going on. So, as far as I'm concerned, I don't care if it's with the city manager, or with the city service guy, or Rich, that there is going to be somebody that takes care of these contracts, because we have people that ask things about contracts, do you have a waiver in it? I don't know. Well, somebody has to know, and if you, you don't have a proper guy that's handling it, and he has to have an engineering degree, and he has to have some kind of road degree, and he has to have some kind of business degree, or something like that, in, in with it. Maybe I got too many degrees in it, but, all right, but we'll take a few out. But he has to have some knowledge of what's going on. Now, as far as I'm concerned, we can save, just by cutting down on stuff, on engineering, through this fellow here. And as far as I'm concerned, this is what we got to have. Now, somebody's going to say.
No, we won't tell what somebody else is going to say.
Either one for the, for the manager, or either one for city service. City service did a good job on the storm, we can't complain. They, they cleaned the streets and everything was perfect. They did a hell, heck of a job, as far as I'm concerned. But, when it comes to, we have to have somebody that, here's the name of the company, we have all the wages, all the waivers, we have the insurance forms, we have everything to do the job, and that's what we got to have. And if you don't want it, that's up to you.
Alderman Woods.
I think we're all in agreement that we want something. And again, this all goes back, and if you listen to what everybody said, I think everybody's got the same argument, and we need somebody that, to do contract administration, somebody to keep their eye on the dollars for the city, to watch?
Right.
To control the extras and stuff going on. We don't necessarily need an engineer. We, we could discuss this agnozium tonight, I don't think we're ready to do that, but the engineering department used to be out of city hall before, and public works was separate from that. We're trying to combine engineering and public works together, I don't know if that's, you know, to weigh the go, but we do, what I do know, and I said this when John was here before, I said it when I first started on the council, is we needed somebody to get a better handle and control on these contracts and administering them, it's determined if we're collecting the waivers on time and correctly, and the extras and stuff that are going on. I mean, if you look at all the contracts we administered last year, how much did we spend in extras on all those contracts? Some of it needed, I'm not saying it was or wasn't needed, I'm just saying, that's a lot going on for nobody to be watching. And when I say nobody, we don't directly have a staff person, that that's their assigned duty. That makes me nervous. So, I think everybody knows where I stand.
Okay, we had a motion, didn't we? Who made the motion?
I did, he.
And you?
The motion is?
It was seconded?
Yes.
I second it.
The motion was to?
The motion was to deny this position at this time until we do some other searching of maybe a city manager, or slash, city manager, public works. I want to do some more research on it, or they come back with some proposal.
Kind of a nebulous motion. All in favor? Let's have a roll call. Everybody understands the motion?
So, where's it go on the budget? That's my question. Where are we going to put it?
First, let's?
Okay.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
No.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Murray Wesley?
Yes.
It comes to what? I didn't keep count.
Yeah, but why?
For approval?
No.
Oh.
To take out.
Take it out, well, to prove to take it out. Okay, that passes us.
The same thing, but.
So, we're going to put this off until our next budget meeting, and have, have Alderman talk to the manager. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson, maybe you have an idea.
Well, my question was going to kind of echo yours, and I think Alderman, or Wesley's question as well. I think, it sounded like there was a consensus to do something, but not this. So, are we taking the whole 111,000 out of the budget? Are we leaving some placeholder for conversation at a future time? I just want to know if we're leaving money in the budget for a future hire, once this is vetted out over the next couple of months, or if we're completely removing it, and then we'll just add it by amendment at that time?
Where would you leave it? Where would you leave the money, if we kept it?
That would be the next question. So, I guess the first question is, take it out or leave it in, and then we'd figure out where to leave it in.
Mr. Mayor?
We're going to have to make a decision, because projects are going to start up in a couple of months, so if we're going to have somebody watching, you know, being a project manager slash assistant city manager, whatever, we can't have what happened last Contract manager, whatever the title you want to give this.
Mr. Manager, do you have?
Well, I've been hearing a lot, I've been, not really. I've been hearing a lot of talk about the, you know, putting this task on an assistant city manager, or hybrid position, or something like that. Just in, in my opinion, this is the last thing I'd want the assistant city manager doing. This is not a component of an assistant city manager job descriptions that I've read recently. Could they do it? Yes, they could. Would I task them with it? No.
Would you what?
Task who?
No.
Task who? This person?
This person, this hypothetical person.
So, you would like an assistant city manager?
No, I didn't, no.
I thought you just said you did. I'm sorry, I heard you wrong then. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here's my thing, leave it in at this time, let's, we got committee meeting next week, right? No, no, we don't, two weeks. Well, why don't we discuss this, can we discuss this in council meeting, and give you directions on that? Future, I mean, instead of going committee, can we discuss it at committee meeting, they're going to give a direction, which way we want to go? The point is, I say leave it in there, because one way or another, we're going to do something. I think the council's on the, I'm on the favor of doing, we're thinking about doing something, but we don't know where. So, leave it in the budget, and I'd like to discuss this.
This is, Mr. Mayor, do you want to say something, and then?
Jeff, next week, under executive session, can we discuss this under personnel, and have a?
Oh, yeah. Would that be possible, Mr. Manager?
Well, in reality, we planned for a second budget committee meeting anyway. Being realistic, we know that it usually takes two meetings. So, we have a budget meeting scheduled for March 14th anyway.
Right.
So, we can certainly talk about it then.
Either way.
But what are we going to do in the meantime, to get our minds all in the same place?
Be more confused, as the city manager puts us.
Which, I mean, we, you know, the council seems pretty divided. So, are you going to be able to come up with a suggestion that'll satisfy the council? Mr. Manager?
Well, the staff recommendation was the green sheet. I'm getting the feeling that that's really not the direction the council wants to go.
Okay.
So, if we were to come up with another staff recommendation?
Yeah.
And we, I was given this expanded level item. So if we were to come up with another staff recommendation, and I was given this expanded level item, I would deny it. It just makes the most sense to do it this way. So we can do it how the council wants, I can come up with some ideas, but this way was the recommended way to do it. But we can do it any way you want, that's fine.
We can do it any way we want.
You can do it any way you...
But you want it this way?
I would recommend it this way, staff recommended it this way. I see from the discussion tonight that council's not comfortable with that. So if you have another idea on how you want to do it, you can provide input offline, and then we can try to bring something forward. But this was the best scenario that staff presented. This was the favorable scenario based upon what we thought. So any deviation from that would move away from our recommendation.
Let me hear from Mr. Roy Wesley for a moment.
Well, Mr. Manager, as you've been putting this all night tonight on this thing, it's very confusing on how you're saying it. It was perfectly understandable here that this council is looking towards this assistant city manager position to help you and Rich to do what is need to be done. So I don't, maybe you want to throw another twist in this because you like to do those things and change the words around here. So give it your best shot. If you...
I'd like to know from the council, are we looking for an engineer or are we looking for an hands-on, down-in-the-ditch, Public Works guy? All right, Mr. Woods.
I don't believe that we necessarily need another engineer. Most of the guys watching the street projects are not engineers. The guy watching the treatment plant is not an engineer. So I don't think that that's necessarily a qualification. It's not a bad thing if he was, but I don't think it's the deal breaker. Again, it goes back to administering and, and the contracts and watching them and looking out for the cities. It's the dollars and cents.
I, I don't know, you know, when they're, for working on the bridge over the Salt Creek, the train bridge, and they had five guys in one colored hat that were doing the work, but there were eight guys there in a different colored hat that were standing there like this. And I hate to see that happen in Wooddale. Alderman Lozara. Maybe you've got a secret formula.
Well, I, I think the position I'd like to see, Phil, is a contract manager. Seems like every time we, we get kind of back to the same spot is who's looking at our contracts. So my proposal would be a contract manager, fifty thousand plus benefits, and go out and find a guy like that. I don't know if we need, you know, to get into having a assistant for the city manager. And I mean, now with this whole thing, we might as well take it out and throw it in the garbage as far as what, what they recommended. But everything that I'm hearing from everyone is contract manager. So there, I would propose a contract manager, fifty thousand dollars plus benefits. I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
May I ask what you mean by contract manager?
Someone that oversees our, our contracts, our waivers, what we've been talking about probably for the last hour and a half.
Who would he be working for?
He'd be working for the Public Works, not the city manager.
He'd be working for the engineer?
He'd be, no, he'd be working for Rich.
Rich is an engineer.
Then he'd be working for our engineer.
And you seconded that motion, Alderman Winger? Can we have a call a vote on that?
Alderman Woods.
No.
Alderman Lozara.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
No.
Alderman Shaki.
I didn't know you was voting.
You know, I don't know. I abstain.
Okay, Alderman Coles.
Yes, I'd go along with that.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
No.
Same thing.
So it's a tie, no?
Same thing.
You know what, let's, let's, it's ten o'clock. It's ten o'clock, let's take a five-minute break, let our heads get back together, and come back for just one hour and be done at eleven o'clock whether, wherever we are at the time. Is that agreeable with everybody down that end of the table, too? Hello? Hey, guys, the chairman. Five-minute break? Oh, okay, I didn't know. And I'm going to make a statement and then make a motion. I told the people that I represent that my thinking about money is that if you want something and you want to look for the money for it, forget it. If you need something and you need the money, vote yes. So I'm going to go, I know I'm going to make a lot of enemies, but I'm going to approve or make a motion that we go along with the city manager. This is the way he thinks it should be done. He's the manager, he's the one we're paying all the big bucks for, too. And I'm making a motion to approve this so-called Public Works Project Manager for a total of one hundred and eleven thousand dollars, seven hundred and eighty-four cents a year. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Please take roll.
Oh, wait, no questions?
Oh, you can ask a question, just, just one.
You've asked enough of questions.
This is, we're taking more on this than we did the whole bunch of...
You said Public Works Assistant City Manager?
I said description, Public Works Project Manager. As staff has recommended. Any other questions? Alderman Woods.
Just a statement, while I like our city manager, I don't think he's always right.
You know, I've had it said that I'm not always right, but I'm never wrong. So I mean, Mr. Manager, you want to...
I would one hundred percent agree with Alderman Woods.
What did he say, that everybody likes you? Please call the roll on that motion.
Alderman Woods.
No.
Alderman Lozara.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
No.
Alderman Shaki.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Abstain.
Motion carries. We can go on now.
Eugene had a question.
I cannot believe...
There's no more questions until we have a motion on the floor.
Doesn't pass.
Wait, it did, did it?
It passed.
I thought it did.
It passed.
It's fine.
It still has to go through council.
We'll have a discussion.
Okay, Mr., your name was Brad Wilson, right? You want to continue now on the rest of this? Do we have anything more to talk about in Public Works?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, actually, the next expanded level item is for the Public Works Mutual Aid Network. This is something, you can kind of see the highlights there, it was on page one forty-nine and one fifty in the book itself. And those are the high points of it. This came, I believe, from the FAQ page of their website, actually. And if there's any more specific questions or commentary, I will defer to Mr. Gallus on this. Looks like the, the cost to join the organization is relatively low, and it does appear that there are some potential benefits to it for the nominal cost. But again, I'll defer to Mr. Gallus for any technical questions on the, the organization, what it is, things of that nature.
I'm not sure about what you mean about there is no cost for the first five days of assistance. What kind of assistance are we talking about?
Just to be clear, the city currently belongs to mutual aid, has a mutual aid agreement in DuPage County for DuPage County communities. What happens is if a tornado were to come through here, certainly it could affect other communities in DuPage County. So going to this organization or joining this organization, which the vast majority of people throughout the state have done, gives you coverage throughout the state. So to get to your question, five days, if, if the city of Wooddale, for example, was requested for something in Springfield, there was a tornado that went through, or some town in southern Illinois, the first five days, we would donate our people's time to that. And then if there's a disaster declaration, we would then be reimbursed for that time. But if there's only four days, let's say, of time where we committed and there was not a disaster declaration, we wouldn't receive any reimbursement through the, through FEMA. And the same return for us. So if we had a tornado that came through here, we called Springfield.
Oh, tornadoes.
No, absolutely not.
Okay, so were you talking about three hundred dollars? Who gets the money? The organization?
The organization, that's the organization fees, just to administer...
It's just a paperwork thing?
It is.
I make a motion to approve the IPWMAN.
Second.
Any questions before we take a vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Yes, we went through the two expanded level items in the Public Works Administration Department. And we went through a while ago the slide. So I'm still going to, if there's any questions on any of the other line items in Public Works Administration.
We do have one, Alderman Roy Wesley.
Seasonal employees. You had five thousand. You're going to fifteen hundred?
Why?
They didn't, they didn't want to use that whole process again this year. They felt like they can get by with only one person, and I'm working with George Goodu on that. It's to do just sidewalk inspection and determine what's necessary for sidewalk remedies. So what we have done is previously is we've had a summer hire that's come in and done that. So fifteen hundred dollars should cover that for the summer.
Could I add it to this?
Yeah, of course.
I, I want to know, I want to know. Doesn't seasonals cut the grass and do the flowers or do the mulch or whatever? I thought that's what that comes under. Go ahead.
Yeah, those seasonals are in the Streets Division, which is the next tab in the budget book. So that, that's where those seasonals come out of, the ones that mow the grass and the flowers and stuff like that. That's in a different department. This is for the Administration Department for the officer, like for Mr. Gallus, that doing the sidewalk, sidewalk counts. But yes, you are correct that the seasonals do mow and stuff like that. That's the next tab in the budget book.
On the Public Works Project Manager, it says gathering infrastructure data, wouldn't that include sidewalks?
Gathering infrastructure data would be more like a report that would be done for our sanitary system, determine whether there's leaks in there and what remedies need to be done, what capital improvement is necessary in order to remedy whatever leaks we might have in our system.
Sounds to me like it would include sidewalks.
It, it certainly could.
One other.
Mr. Wesley.
And it says other expenses, other expenditures. The last item is from twenty-seven hundred to sixty-five hundred. It's on one fifty-two. No, he's talking right. Twenty-seven.
Oh, that's one of those things we need a footnote. What are we talking about, other expenditures?
Yes.
Please.
Yeah, looking back, the twenty-seven hundred this year, the biggest difference, a couple of differences. One of the biggest ones in there is the safety program. So the, the budget for the safety program has decreased a little bit. Year-over-year, it was four thousand, and the budget's going to go down to three thousand. That's something that, you know, apparently not a lot of money spent on in the Administration Division this year. But they're looking to, to go at it a little bit harder next year. And also, the prior year total for other expenditures was ten thousand. It is going down to sixty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred of that is a reduction in meetings and conferences for Administration, which would be predominantly for Mr. Gallus himself. The prior years have been forty-five and a little over five thousand. So the...
I would, I would really like to see what kind of meetings and conferences he's going to go to. I mean, since we're already hiring assistant for him over here, if that's what it is, or whatever it's called, yeah, I'm going to be very cautious on, on how much money is being spent in Public Works right now. We just added a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars compared to last year, which I think is ridiculous.
To your point, I cut that budget in half from where it was last year.
I still would like to see the list of conferences that year.
And to your comment about the Public Works Manager, it's cost neutral. As I said, we're removing some budget to pay for the employee. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
I'm not going to sit here and argue with it on it tonight.
And I hate that term, cost neutral.
I do, too.
We, we were bamboozled a couple of times with that. Yes, sir.
My question is, then let's go back to, again, we have your eleven, one hundred and eleven thousand that we approved tonight. My question is, is he going to any conferences that we hire that he might need some education? Are we adding that in his, this budget, too? Because if you're hiring him, I, I'm sure we're going to have to send him to a couple of classes to get up on speed in that. Is that in this budget, or are we going to have a budget amendment when he goes to these classes or not? Because if you're hiring this guy, you're telling me this guy is going to go no classes, no safety courses, nothing? He's going to come right out and do his job without doing any training or anything else? I, I just, I don't know that.
Alderman Coles.
Could he answer that question?
I hate to say anything, but we don't know who he is, and we don't know what he's gone, what he's, what kind of education he's going to have. So why can't, why start arguing about if you're going to send him to classes or not? We have to see what his potentials are first. We're not hiring, he ain't hired yet until his potentials come. So if his potentials ain't right, you don't hire him, and you look at somebody else. I mean, you're, you're talking before the guy is even here.
Alderman Winger.
This person could even be a she.
Yes, she, that's right. That's right. I agree with you.
Okay, we, did we get past that? Who, what? Who was going to answer that? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I'm not saying not to, I'm saying if he needs to up the budget for the training, then up the budget. The point is, I don't want to sit here and come in here and I look at this budget six months down the line that we passed his budget, and his account is way outwack, a hundred and forty percent spent. If you're going to it, then up it the budget for the training then.
Is it your motion?
Well, I'm just saying, but I, I'm not against it, but is he shooting too low?
If, if you don't mind, Alderman Wesley, I will tell you this, that for my first year, I, I won't be able to participate in the conferences and the training that I would otherwise like to because there's an awful lot for me to get up to speed on. And so I feel like this budget is probably more than appropriate, and I would share that budget with whomever you direct us to hire.
So we won't have any increases in that part of the budget? All right. Please go on. I guess that's taken care of, right?
Unless there's other questions on Administration, we'll go on to Streets.
No. Please continue. Please continue.
Streets Division, overall total budget-to-budget is down a little over sixty-four hundred. Contractual, a lot of minor decreases here and there. Commodities decrease due to a slight reduction in fuel costs, capital, outlay, reduction in other equipment, and in other, reduction in the infamous miscellaneous line item. Just to circle...
Yes, sir, Mr. Wesley, you're first to mine again.
Storm, Streambank's streetscape goes from ten thousand, and now you're going to twenty thousand. Is that to do the repair on Streambank stabilization? So we didn't do any money spent last year on it? Or did we spend? We spent seven hundred and fifty-four dollars only? Or...
No, go to the red column, fifteen, two fifty was spent this year.
Okay, so we're going to come back and dump another twenty into it?
That's, this is an ongoing thing with Streamback State Bank Stabilization.
I understand that, but we always put ten thousand dollars away every year. So are we not doing what we've been doing? Because the two thousand and twelve, we only did seven fifty-four.
But that's the trouble, we weren't doing it.
Okay.
So now you've got to catch up. Mr. Mayor?
Well, a lot of this comes through stormwater, and basically a few years back, they had done some, and then they were told nothing was needed, if I recall. That's why the money wasn't spent. I think it was that one year that I remember, I think it was nineteen thousand.
Well, again, I don't think the engineer was checking on it, because when we, when we had him at stormwater, the engineer from Baxton Woman said, what are checks? What do we do, what do you do with checks? I have a question, though. Dump fees, disposal of street sweeping and landscape waste, fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars? Anybody can take it?
Yeah, I mean, we obviously, we sweep streets, we collect the refuse, we put it into a bin, we send it over there, and our bill came to fourteen thousand, five hundred. That's what we're projecting. Last year, I believe, we budgeted, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars for that, but I think we found what is consistently being spent with the budget. I mean, if you can imagine, these street sweepers, they pick up debris from the streets, and that can be a variable. But, you know, I think we're hoping that that'll be more consistent this year.
That include lawn cutting and...
No, that's just for street sweeping, material collected in the hopper.
Okay, that's fine. Anybody else? I guess we're clear on this one.
Moving ahead to vehicle maintenance, this is obviously where all the fleet for the city gets repaired out of. Budget year to budget year, up a little over fourteen thousand. One of the, kind of the big, the big change here is in contractual. There's three pieces of equipment that the garage has notified us are in need of potential repair, and each are, you know, two to three grand apiece. So we need to, you know, maintain the machinery that the garage has. The capital outlay line item does have one expanded level item. That's for a wheel alignment machine. We'll get to that in a second. And then others down, eight hundred dollars. There's a lot of the miscellaneous stuff. We've been able to categorize in one of the existing categories, so they don't need as much in the catch-all account, so.
The most I know about cars is how to drive it, I think. Do we really need a machine to align the wheels? What does it cost to have it taken into a private garage and have wheels aligned? I don't know.
The equipment that we have today has been there for twenty-three years. So if you were to look at how many wheel alignments we would do over the course of twenty-three years and add that up, I think forty-five hundred dollars would probably more than cover that and probably be a better way for us to continue to do that. I mean, I could follow up with you on some numbers on that, but I guess I'm just looking at it from that practical standpoint, forty-five hundred bucks, you know, if you do...
So the piece of equipment now works, but it can't accurately center the steering wheel?
That's correct. After twenty-three years of service, it probably takes more of our mechanic's time away from doing other projects because of the amount of energy that needs to be put into doing that. What they basically do is they do it two to three times before they get it right with the existing equipment. This equipment would just enable us to set it on there. It's tailored for some of the larger equipment that we have today. You set it on there, it does an alignment, and it's done, rather than the process that we use today where you go through an iteration, you take it out for a ride, you bring it back in, and it's a lot of what I'll call trial and error.
It'll be in the same places as the one we have now. We don't need extra room for it.
No.
Any questions? Alderman Coles, question?
All right, I can tell you how much it costs. Average between fifty-five and seventy-five dollars for four-wheel drive, for four-wheel alignment. And the old machines, the new setup, you have to have, because most of the cars now are becoming independent suspension in the back, if you know what that means. That means that each wheel is separate.
No, don't explain it. Just go ahead.
No, no, I'm just telling you what they have to do.
We got to eleven o'clock, Joe. Quick, quick.
It only takes two minutes. And they have to set the machines on all four wheels, and they line all four wheels all at the same time.
Good, no, thank you. Anything else? Alderman Wesley?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the expansion of four thousand, five hundred thousand on this piece of equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve, opposed? Nobody opposed that passes? Next page, please. Next tab.
Just wanted to see if there's any questions on any of the other line items within vehicle maintenance before we move on.
Aren't they pretty much the same as last year?
Pretty close.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions about? I guess we don't. Please continue.
Thank you. Central services, it's by the description and then the narrative in the budget, these are items that don't easily lend themselves to a particular department or apply to the entire city, the entire general fund. Property casualty insurance, for example, healthcare insurance, things of that nature. As you can see, aside from other, all the categories are down. Contractual for the property casualty insurance, which we discussed was a month or two ago, opting out of IRMA. Interfund is the reduction in equipment replacement, and the increase in other is for the police pension fund contribution that we, again, discussed a few months ago with the property tax levy here, so.
And the tuition reimbursement, we, that's when they take courses to keep their certification up?
The tuition reimbursement in central services is for, I'll say, actual college courses or other courses. The, the courses to keep up, to do the continuing education, to keep the certificates, is handled through the training education or the conferences and meeting line items in the individual departmental budgets. This is if you want to go to, you know, pursue your bachelor's, master's, PhD, JD, you know, something like that. And I know that's your question, so.
I'm not sure I understand what benefit that is to the city.
Well, generically, you'll have higher qual, higher educated people. You know, so instead of having an employee with, you know, perhaps just a bachelor's degree, they go through and get their master's degree, so they're going to have a higher level of education, you know, more experienced.
So they're more productive?
That's the idea, more educated, more productive, correct.
Really? Well, Mr. Mayor?
We'll stay on that topic. Brad, personally, you know, if we have a person with a little more experience, a little higher degree, I could go along with that, but the Personnel Manual, I think I brought this up a couple of times, only gives, once they're done with the class, six months to the city. I can speak from experience, knowing somebody who had to go through a specific type of training. Four months of training, got all their certificates, all their licenses, and had the sign that they would work for the company for three years, or there was a seventy thousand dollar penalty. So it's one thing if we're going to send people to school, we're going to let them get diplomas, and, and then they'll be able to get a job somewhere else for more money. We should have some type of commitment if we're going to keep this in. That's all I got to say on it. Whether the council wants to do it, I know they took it out before, whatever they choose to do, but if we're going to go forward with this, we should have some type of commitment.